Okay, we can all, we get started. It's exactly 7:05. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I'm going to that.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out for their busy schedule, coming out to express their opinions, to find out what's going on in the village, to ask questions, to, you know, commiserate between neighbors. That's one of the main things. You know, your problem may be someone may have a solution to it. It's just networking and we need to do that. But the town hall meetings are for information and they're here to kind of let you know what's happening in the village and throughout and around and surrounding areas. But tonight, I have a different perspective. I just wanted to share some things with everyone, I'm sure. And it's, it's just hard to hear when you hear your leader of a town bad mouth, talk about employees. Now by them talking about a mayor, talking about another elected official, that's common, that's politics. And that's what happens. But when you have a mayor who is your ex-official, he's your chief justice or chief officer of the village, reprimand an employee that works for the village in public, I do have a problem with that. I've never seen a mayor, I've been out here since 1982 and I've come to a few board meetings and I've seen that there was a few things going back and forth, but I've never heard a city mayor talk about an employee. Yes, they fired employees, there was employees that were fired because of incompetence and things like that, but it was never brought up at a board meeting, it was never brought up at a meeting of the people where you can put it out there on social media to tell everyone the reason why I didn't do this because I felt this person was damaging the village. That's unacceptable. I'm still trying to get my thought out. Larry, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna blurt out, please don't do that. Thank you. But to do something like that, I think is very, very unprofessional. And to be in charge and to be your mayor of a town, you should never do that. You should never tell people, residents, that a person who's still employed doesn't know what they're doing, didn't know what they're doing, like got rid of them because they were damaging the town. If you go on Facebook, which the mayor doesn't go on, he made that clear in his speech, you could see what he said. But I do have a few things that I want to say, the reason why, and usually I don't do this because you don't come here to hear us go back and forth like that. It's not about that, it's not about you coming out here to hear me rant and rave about what the mayor's not doing this and that. But when he spreads lies about me, I have to say something. When he spreads lies and tells people that I and my cohort, which is another trustee, are plotting to bring the village down, first of all, that's stupid. How can we do anything like that, number one? If you didn't, as mayor, take care of your business and it failed, don't blame it on somebody, take the, take, take, you know, take the blame. You weren't able to do it, tell people we weren't able to get that deal, simple as that. But don't blame it on another trustee or another elected official, the reason why. You know, I'm, I am out there backstabbing the village, trying to make deals with Fort, with our Fort Heights. Those, that's one of the things that he has mentioned. Another thing that I'm, everything that he tries to do, I try to sabotage it. And that's damaging, and also, I'm damaging the village and I haven't done anything since I've been trustee. My respect, my record speaks for itself. I'm not gonna sit here and try to, to go over that because if you didn't, if people didn't believe in me, see, he was talking to 10 people, four of them were his family. So if you don't believe in what a person does, that's why no one came. And also, I don't care about, this is verbatim, this is something that he quoted, I'm quoting him, doesn't care about the families of Saw Village. Also, I interceded in a deal on 394 and saw a trail right there on the corner. There was no deal on 394 and saw a trail. I don't know where that comes from, but I sabotaged that. And now everyone knows where Wimpack is located. And there must be something, something going on with Wimpack, that they want something, but he quoted that I went to Wimpack and tried to sabotage that and that's why they happened a problem. I mean, I'm a trustee. I, first of all, back to the mayor of Fort Heights, I know him, never been to Fort Heights Town Hall, never been to the mayor's office, you know, but I do know, I keep my head to the ground and I do know the things that are going on. And the mayor has some questions, the mayor of Fort Heights asked question that he should talk and ask our mayor to come and talk to him. And our mayor said he's not going to. If you look at what he says, he's not, he needs, that, that, that the mayor of Fort Heights had a meeting, didn't invite him, he takes issue to that and he will, and he wants the mayor of Fort Heights to come to him and apologize for not inviting him to the meeting. And until that happens, he won't talk to him. So, you go figure. But that's not what you, when you become a mayor of a town, you have to swallow your pride. You have to move, it's not about you anymore, it's about this town. You become an elected official, it's not about you, it's about this town. And to single out people because of your indiscretion, because you failed to do what you need to do, we did that, that's what our kids do. You ask them a question, who knocked that over? He did. They did. Anybody but you. That's what children do. So, only thing I'm saying is, and I'm, you know, I, I didn't want to really talk about it, but I'm tired of turning and seeing the cameras on and just looking at this, this man do this and make these statements in public. The one thing that he said it and someone told me was hearsay, that's, that's one thing. But when I actually heard these things, I had to bring it, I had to say something about it. I have some other things to say about what he hasn't done, but I'll just leave you with That's the only time he said that he never disrupted the last administration. I've never, ever seen a trustee stand up at a board meeting, walk over to the mayor and stand over him and tell him, stop pounding that gap, never. Never seen that happen. He wanted to have people, he arrested for just talking. They were just expressing themselves. He wanted them arrested, he told the police officer, and I quote, that's their second time. I mean, these are your constituents, these are the people, they, they may have not put you in there, but their taxes paid for all of this. And I just wanted to bring it to you guys to let you know that I personally don't think that's a proper thing for a mayor. I don't think that's a proper thing for anyone that represents your town to sit and talk to people that way. So with that said, we can move forth with our town hall meeting. I just, two quick things. Number one, leaf pickup. Your leaves are due by the end of this week. Saturday, put them out there on the street and the, they're gonna get to it, but they'll get to it on your normal trash pickup day. So if you, but put them out there by Saturday because I'm sure no one gets picked up on Sunday, but some people do get their, uh, trash picked up on Monday and then the villagers come and come by with a truck and things and, and they're gonna follow behind that to pick up the leaves. So get your leaves out by this Saturday, that's why they wanted it. I say Saturday, Sunday, because I don't see anybody that's gonna be out there Sunday, but so, but get it out by the end of the week so you can have your leaves. And, and all you have to do is just brush them to the, to the, to the, to the curb. And I heard it's gonna be snow this weekend. I still say, pull your leaves out there, put them out there. The wind won't let them blow because they'll probably be wet, so just put them out there on the street and, and then pick them up. Now, do me a favor. After, next week, in other words, the whole week goes by and your leaves have not been picked up, call Village Hall and let them know where you live. And if anybody has my number, give me a call and we'll, and we'll make sure that they get out there because if they want you to have the leaves out at that time, and it only takes, it takes, you know, if it's gonna be your garbage day, unless we have a 20 inches of snow, they should pick it up. I hate when they advertise something and you drive around two weeks later and they're still sitting there. So if there's a problem, please let me know and also call Village Hall like I stated before. You guys, you guys, not me, not trustee, not the mayor, you guys run the village. Something that you don't like, say something. Don't be, don't hold back because when you hold back, people think, oh, that's okay, they're not complaining. So please, at least, say something. The second thing, Santa Claus parade will be December 5th. Everyone knows about Santa Claus parades. Anyone who does not know about Santa Claus parade, what happens? He, Santa Claus goes around town, they drive through the neighborhood throwing candy out to the kids and then afterwards, I would say maybe three or four o'clock, you come up to the community center and they have hot chocolate and Santa Claus will be there for pictures. So, yes ma'am?
Excuse me, on our water bill, it says we pick up the leaves at 18. Someone came down my street this morning and I asked him, he said, he says I had my guy out there. He said, yeah. Because it was winter, it was so cold.
You said, where'd you see 18 there? On your water bill? Okay. Okay, when you get, are the leaves still out there? You have them up yet?
No, I picked up some, but I didn't do my neighbor because he's little old enough. And the neighbor was my nephew.
Okay, at the end of tonight, give me your address and you said your neighbor next door to you?
Yes.
Okay, have they put them out there yet?
I was gonna put them out there, but he said he's not gonna pick them up for me.
Oh, someone from Public Works told you that? What, did they happen to stop in the city or?
No, I asked them because they were coming down the street today about 9:20. Did you have, or the person?
Oh, so the garbage truck, so today was your garbage day?
No, I'm not gonna say it's Friday.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna get your address at the end of tonight and then I'll, I'll find out about that, but still put your leaves out there. And if your neighbor, you talk to your neighbor who's...
Not with her, it's not me.
Oh, you do? Oh, they were good neighbor? That's great, okay, so you do hers and yours. Well, yeah, let me know and I'll have someone make sure that they, because they're supposed to do it on the day they pick up the garbage, which makes sense, because you know. Thank you. Yes ma'am?
I'd just like to commend you and trustee Tate's on the Veterans Day celebration.
Oh, okay, yes, that was, I was gonna get to that later and, you know, when it comes to people talking about commitment, since you said that, I'll, I'll say this. Rarely do you see a person in a village that commits all of their free time to community service. Rarely do you see that happen, even myself. I didn't get involved in the village really until, well, I moved out here in 82, I got involved at my school board, but I didn't get involved in the village until 94, that I really, really got involved, before then I was trying to raise my family and things. But this gentleman has served, first of all, I want to say civic duty, he served his country, several tours of duty, not one, several tours of duty. I'm sorry, but I didn't get a half, I didn't even go in, you know. But, and then come back and still serve his country, I'm sorry, his town, being a school board president, on the school board, a coach, now he's a trustee. I mean, I'm not trying to pat him on the back, I'm just letting you know a fact and then have, have people talk about what they have not done. I challenge anybody in here to do that much. I mean, it's, it's really, it's commendable, I can't say enough, but when you attack people, look at, you know, when you point their finger, you got the fork coming back at you. Don't, I hate when people do that, you don't, until you walk in that person's shoes, you can't talk about that person. And we shouldn't talk about one another until we happen to do that. But to make light of everything that happens? Veterans Day was the least we can do for the veterans. Veterans Day was the least we can thank them for. You know, like that one gentleman stayed, that was the guest speaker, you know, thank you, accolades are fine, but there are disabled vets out there that need your help each and every day. That, you know, they're, they're, they're not even walking, they have psychological problems, they have all kinds of problems that, that we don't even comprehend. We take things for granted. Our freedom is taken for granted, just like things happen in the village, we take it for granted. It's not that way, there's always somebody in the background that's doing something to make things happen. So, that's, and then the gentleman I'm talking about, yes, it is Lieutenant Colonel, that's a shit, Lieutenant Colonel. Lieutenant Colonel, super close, I mean, growing my own. And I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't even try to think about what this young, I'm sorry, what this man went through, what he went through, but he, he is a young man in comparison, yes he is. But it's just, you know, you can sit here all day long and just give accolades, I'm just proud to know the man.
Well, what you guys did was, was...
Well, what we did was nothing, well...
No, but what I'm saying is the, how you recognized each individual veteran, my dad was here and that meant the world to him. You two are now his best friends, you and Seesaw are now his best friends.
But it's, it's the least we can do. I mean, that was something that, you know, like I stated, I, I don't even know the experience. Like people say, oh, I know what you're talking about. No, I don't know what you're talking about because I've never done it. I just know what it took and, and, and I have friends and that were in the service or in the war. The other young man was there on that ship. He got on, went to the bathroom, came back, everybody that he was sitting with was gone. He's got to live with that for the rest of his life. That all he had, he got saved because he had to go to the bathroom. So, but anyway, I just want to say that I'm proud to be able to do something for our vets. Next year, it's gonna be bigger and better, we have some more surprises, so if you know any more veterans, it's gonna be, every year I try to do... Anyway, if you know anything about me, I always try to do things bigger and better every year because this town deserves bigger and better. You know, it's not about what can you do for me lately, no. It's about what we can do for you. And this town would not move forward, we can sit there and talk about forward motions all till we fall flat on our face. Until you change your perception, you change the makeup, you change the environment of this town, who's gonna do business here? It's not gonna happen. You can't sell your house, you haven't put, you haven't painted your house in 20 years and you're gonna try to sell it with everything falling off? It's not gonna happen, you give it away, but it's not gonna happen. You have to make it, you have to bring positiveness here. I mean, I appreciate the police chief coming in, a hiring freeze, that's what was told and that's why we laid people off, because we had a hiring freeze. With the freeze for some and others it's not. Rules were made for everybody, not just the ones that make the rules, rules were made for everybody and that's what you learn, that's what you teach your children, that's what we should be doing following that same example. But we cannot bring and attract, well, we will attract certain businesses. Does everybody know that we lost Boost Mobile?
Wow.
Yeah, we lost Boost Mobile. Boost Mobile was right there next to the, to the, um, barber shop, right there in that plaza. They're gone.
Why?
I, I thought, I, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to talk to them later, I didn't know they were going. But they left, that's a small business. Did it impact? I mean, it was something that was coming in, but it's the fact remains, we lost them. We lost them, you know. But I tried to bring in a business, yes, it was a gaming institution, it was a gaming parlor, it was something to bring in. All the mayor had to do was talk to them and, and get back with them, never happened, we lost that. But they have several gaming parlors in all the communities surrounding us. So, you know, it's up to that person that owned that gaming parlor to, to make sure that it's safe because that's his money. But we have, anyone that did, um, Hometown Zero, they have gaming there. You don't see people hanging out there doing whatever. But you cannot count anyone out, get anything out in, in any village. But to tell people that it's someone else's fault because we don't have businesses here, that's not what you do. You get on top of it, you find out what you have to do to try to talk to the people to bring them in here. And I was at the school board meeting the other night, on Monday, and they were talking about the impact in the village and about new businesses and about money they receive from the TIF. They received money from TIF 1 because TIF 1 was dissolved. So right now, all the taxes that are paid in that plaza over there where Fairway and Advance Auto, wow, we have four. Fairway, Advance Auto, Sharks, and Dollar General, all that money goes to the different taxing bodies. There's about six of them. Village gets their portion, School Districts, 206, Library Board, Mosquito Abatement, Bloom Township, and Prairie State. They all get their share of what, of, of, of part of that. But they claimed there was a lot of money that came in that one time because, why? Because that's what was left over in the tax, in the, in the TIF. It's not that they pay that much every year, that's what was left over. Because you can't use TIF money unless it's for the TIF district, you can't use it as your own personal sludge fund. But those are some of the things that need to be explained to the people, why you have TIF districts. Your other, your schools and your libraries don't like TIF districts because they don't get any money from them. The money stays in that district to enhance that. So what happens is, when that money's there, the proprietors of those particular businesses get to use the money to better their business, which is a good incentive. You don't have to use your own, you're paying taxes, it stays there. And the village draws, the village draws an administrative fee out of each district, yes they do. So it's, it just behooves to have a TIF district and basically, you're not gonna get a decent business unless you have one because they want, their money coming back to them. Why should I come to Saw Village? You have to have a, a plan. I've never seen a plan in this administration of how we're gonna bring businesses here and what we need to do from point A to point B, from soup to nuts. How do we attract businesses? First thing you have to do, you have to do something up and down 394 before they even get here. They turn and look east and we wouldn't even wanna live here, let alone, you have a business here and you're just coming in? You're like, wow, what, what, what blew up over there? So that's why you have to put things in place in the village to take care of things like that. Talk to these homeowners, talk to these investors, because you have a lot. The village has a lot of investors. The investors are the ones that really, you have to go after them. Everybody's talking about going after the homeowners. If a homeowner has a home, he's not gonna let his home go down too much because that's his investment. But an investor has nothing to lose, he gets that check, gets that check, because they made those up in there. If we as a village get on them and set rules and regulations so they cannot just come in here, collect rent and keep going. You have to have things in place. Everybody talking about that the village sells, I'm sorry, Section 8 is the villagers' fault? No, it's not. Somebody had to sell or give someone their house. Section 8 is a, a needed purpose in the village, in any community. That's why it's government ran. But you have to go after the ones that own these homes to make sure that they keep them up, make sure that they monitor who lives in these homes and make sure that they can do so, so they can think about their neighbors. That's what we're not doing right now in this village. You know, they got one person writing tickets. We had a whole department, code enforcement department. I'll give you one guess who got rid of all the code? Yes, that's who it was. Got rid of code. Why? Don't know why. Now, we still only have one. We got a brand new police chief, we got a brand new this, we got an administrator who has an, who has an assistant, who has an assistant, we have one person out there making sure that the code is, is kept up. We need more, we need more people out there to monitor what's going on. And that's what we need. Larry, I understand, can you hold that until I get my thought out, free, I think? But we just have to, we have to come and demand better for your dollar. This is your dollar. Either it be, if even if you don't own, you still pay money. You still pay money to the village that you may not think you do, yes you do. If you use water, you pay money. You pay money if you use sewer. And I'm sure if you use water, you better be using sewer. If not, then I don't wanna know about that. But you still pay for services. You know, when you go, you buy something anywhere else and if it's not conducive, you take it back. Well, you can't take it back here, you have to come and you have to let it be known. You have to let it be known because if you don't say anything, first, it won't, because they believe there's nothing wrong. If you don't tell me that I'm doing wrong, I think I'm doing right. So all I'm trying to say is, we need to, and quit that, quit listening, do what it is you feel that you need to do to try to make things happen. You got a problem on your street, come out and say something. Keep coming out till that street is taken care of. Don't just say, okay, I'm gonna get back, well, they didn't never get back to you. Or they get back or they don't get back. You're paying people, we're paying, the village is paying people to take care of things, not to go up and down the street, attend this meeting, attend that meeting, let's go to here, let's do this, let's go, no. This is the town that we gotta take care of first before we go out there and network one bit. We have to take care of our town, then we can say, come out and see Saw Village. Right now, I don't want nobody to come out and see Saw Village, not the way it looks. I don't want, that's not that I'm ashamed, but we have to take care of what we have first because if they come out here, whoa, I didn't know this was out here. Wow, this is nice, this is out here, this is nice. And they, and they're not gonna tell you in front of your face that it's, it's, it's not worth anything. The business isn't, guess what they're gonna do? They're gonna go down to the next light. And then they open up shop there. The next light is gonna pull them and they find out that you're looking, they're gonna pull them and say, well, you can come down here, we can, we have this, we have that, we got everything ready, let's get started. You know, so it took, it, it takes the people of the town to do something. Yes, you did nominate and yes, you did vote for your leaders, but you see what's going on now? The division is here, it's a shame that it is because I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't follow people to recess when I was in school. I, I was, I was just, I, I never follow a crowd all the time because there's, there's always somebody in that crowd doing something for themselves. I have to find out what's going on before I say anything and that's what you should do as residents. You have more power, I always say, you have more power than what you think. It's strength and numbers, you get enough people to come out here and say something, you have no choice but to listen. One or two, they can fend them off. And you have people that are even here tonight, they raise, they talk, but it's one or two, they have nobody behind them, they have... they have nothing, no one says anything, they say what they gotta say, else they find next. We have to, if you don't like, come together or even for just certain things, even just a cause that you feel you're not getting represented in, or you think the village should be doing it, bring it up, talk about it. You know, the reason why we don't have public comment is for that reason. That's the reason why there, we tried to put in a, uh, resolution that we could have public comment at every meeting on any topic. Why would you not want to know what the people say? Why would you want to sit there and, and, uh, and filter through, well, you can't ask this question this week, you come back next week. And then next week, you come back and ask that question, either you, you may have forgot about it. But you come back and you ask that question, now I'm gonna get back with you. Can't get back with you the following week because you can't talk about it. So therefore, I'm gonna get back with you the next one, that's a month. Hopefully, I look out the audience, they're not here. I don't have to answer it. That's a game, people, that's a game. We, we, that's why you have it every meeting. So I'm just, I'm just expressing myself because if I don't, if I rip this, in other words, it's, it's on me. You know? It's not about personal gain to me. It's about me trying to know what's right and do what's right. I got one person I got to answer to, well, really two, one's here on earth and one isn't. But I got two people I have to answer to. But, and that's it, that's all I have to answer to. So it's not about personal gain, I have, I'm not about that. If I was in it for the money, this is like school teachers, they can't pay them enough. I wouldn't be doing this. What money? What, what is it worth going to jail for $10,000? For the rest, well, not the rest of your life, but going to jail to give up your livelihood, your life for $10,000, $5,000, $1,000, whatever amount it is. Because once you take a dollar, you become, you know, you're undertaken, you really are. Follow the money, people, follow the money. We never paid this kind of money before and what are you getting for it? Rhetoric. Okay, enough of my rant and rave. Um, we're going to go into the question part of it. Um, I'm gonna pass this mic around and try to find another one and see if-
I have one right here.
Okay, Ms. Judy Cass, what do you have?
Okay, first of all, I don't have a question. First of all, I want to congratulate you on trustee Tates and trustee Jones. You are an island within yourself, trustee Burgess. And whether it appears in the media, um, on the internet or whatever, the sarcasm, the backstabbing, whatever, you are appreciated. So is trustee Tates and so is trustee Jones. We're thankful the board is not totally by little Obama. We appreciate having the guts, and let me put it right, having the balls to stand up to somebody that's bald-faced lying. And I'm going to go back to the beginning of what you said, trustee Burgess, because I'm upset. I've sat in this room over and over and over again at multiple meetings where you can't, or he can't, or nobody can explain anything because that was in closed session and the legalities and it's about personality. You can't talk about it. Yet you have a mayor and it is my, I was not there, so correct me if I'm wrong. You had a mayor that bald-faced tore apart Tim Levis and Becky.
Yes, he did.
And I have a problem with that. I sat in this room and watched these people be honored, be appreciated. I watched the mayor himself congratulate them. And I want to ask you this. If they were so bad, and we all know that prior to Towers and, uh, well, during Towers' time, there was a problem with the police department. And we all know that Hanks has a problem with our police department. He has a personal vendetta against them. But if they're so bad, why didn't he do something about it? Where's, you know, I, I, for 40 years, I was a registered nurse. You got a problem with a nurse or an employee, whoever they are. There's steps to be taken and things to be done to stop their behavior. Write-ups, verbal warnings, written warnings, and then suspension. He could have been fired at any time. But the mayor didn't fire him. Why? If Becky's so bad, why is she still here? Why hasn't he done anything about it? And for him to bring that out, it's wrong that he not explain what the hell he's talking about. He's hoping that that bad publicity is going to make her tuck her tail and run. But I got news for you, she's a tough lady and I'm right behind her.
Now, let me answer that question for you. The reason why she wasn't at the time, when you, when I need you and I don't have anything, I don't have anyone else that could do whatever and I need you, that's exactly why. I need you. I need you to step in, and she stepped in twice for interim chief. Stepped in twice, not one time for twice. If that, if she wasn't qualified, then why'd you bring her back the second time after the other chief left? Everyone knows when, um, Martin got fired. And the reason why he got fired is because he was lying. David was on the board's end, he knows exactly what happened, he was lying. He lied to the board along with another person. So that's why they were giving them walking papers. They were, she was, he was an at-will employee and so was the other person. But the board stuck together then to get rid of him because he lied. She stepped in, they didn't have anybody, she stepped in and became interim. Then, at the time, the mayor, at the time went out and got his, him a chief. Well, she has the right to do that, we went through all that too. He went, had the right to get an interim chief and he kept that person there, okay? David was on the board to help pick this interim chief. He was on the board to help, I'm sorry, he went on the, yeah, he was on the board to pick Martin. The interim chief was not, didn't have a board for that, he was on board, they had a little board for him to pick the, the, the chief Martin. And he picked him, they gave him some kind of test and he claims he scored high, it was back and forth. Okay, she was good enough to step in there. Now, if she was all that bad, then why did you as the mayor at the time put her in there as interim chief when the other chief stepped down, which was Levis, he stepped down? Why did, why didn't you pick another person to come in? You had seven, what, five sergeants? Pick another sergeant, you didn't think she was going to do it? But don't wait until after you do your job and then come back and say, you didn't do nothing. You made this village bad, you hurt the village, you didn't know what you were doing. That's what I fought a person for doing. If I was all that, then why didn't you give me that position? You could have gave it to a sergeant. You could have gave it to whoever. But don't pick a person and then come back and say that person wasn't qualified. That's where I have a problem. And that's what happened, twice.
I also consider the fact that we have a new police chief. And with what David is putting out there publicly, what has he told this man privately? Are they going to stick together and go after Becky?
I, I, now, that much, I, I don't know about that. I do know there was a comment made at Meet the Mayors that we've had gangs forever at Marathon. Gang bangers, people standing around, up to no good, those were the words that was stated at Saturday. Then here comes Mr. Kowalski and everybody rang. Now, we don't have any problems at, uh, Marathon. Another person in the audience stated that there was a house across the street from them. Now, listen to this very carefully. There was a house across the street from them that had 17 people living in it. They're gone. They're in the neighborhood, but they're not in that house anymore. That's, that's, that's pretty good. Now, if he did all that, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm just going by people's testimony. So be it, if he's that good, hey, I have never had a problem with this chief that we had. Only problem I had was how much we're paying and where we're getting the money from. As far as credentials, you know, only person I've, I have ever had a problem with credentials, and I'll say it right now in, in the open, was our administrator. His credentials weren't conducive to what we were looking for. I don't need another extension of the mayor. I don't need a mouthpiece and then you're so good that you went out and got you a assistant. I mean, that's pretty good.
Well, he didn't know what he was doing, therefore his assistant does.
I don't, I don't care, I don't care. I hired you. I hired you. I hired you to do a, a job that you said you could do. If you couldn't write, then you should have told everybody I can't write. If you can't, if you can't do the, if you can't do secondary work, then you should have told everybody. But don't go out and get an assistant and put that in your contract that you get an assistant. And I've asked the question before, you know?
Also, trustee Burgess, your character assassination is, uh, nowhere near close. I'm tired of hearing what did you do by our clerk and by the mayor. And I have a question to ask. In the 14 years as a trustee and he was head of housing, what did he do? There wasn't one or two meetings a year. Housing got picked up when, um, Gary Holcomb got put in charge. And Gary Holcomb puts his whole heart into it. He has proceeded with housing like the others never have. We have housing back on the ground where we didn't have before. Because there were no meetings, there was nothing being done. And things are being said and done within these meetings that, right here, that show that the effort is actually there.
Well, I'll tell you this. Housing back when David had it, uh, was just recovering from a problem that was going on prior to that, prior to that administration. Uh, it dates all the way back to, uh, Mark Hollis. And they had to disband housing for something I'm not going to go into right now.
Too long.
But, um, I do know, since I don't do anything for the village, I made a phone call. All I did was make a phone call. And talked to some people and saved the village, not, because the village had to pay for that, had saved the village $485 per, per dumpster. Per dumpster. And they had 29, 27 dumpsters. You do the math, but I don't do anything. And the reason why I was able to do that because I talked to people in a way that, you know, I'm not here trying to get you to come kiss the ring, I'm going, I'm going to talk to you. And that's what you have to do as a, as, to, to hear something come out of a mayor's mouth. I'm not going over there until he gives me an apology. And you're too, you're too proud and you're in the wrong position. You're in the wrong position. But as far as what he's done, I, I don't know. He's done more now in the last two years, and you can see with that, with whatever that is, than he's done the whole time he was trustee, no, I don't, I don't see anything. When I, and I did, and I did make the, I won't say a mistake because at the time I thought it was a lie. I took the man for his word when I ran with him in 2011. I took him at his word that he was going to be an upstanding person, that he had integrity. And I said back then, I would never do that again until I saw these other two gentlemen that we, 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 if we didn't run together, we just thought together. But I said, I'm gonna never do that again because of a person that would do something like that for their own cause. I saw that back in 2011. And I got burnt in because I felt, you know, I'm not going to give up my name, but I thought that he was an upstanding person. You know, but then you find out. As far as what he's done, you know the record, you've been out as long as that, longer than I have, you know what he's done.
I have one more thing to say, Derek. And, you know, with the other two trustees coming on, the, the village is divided. It has been divided. It's dividing more. But it's not dividing because you guys have what it takes to ask questions and stand your ground when you think something is wrong. I don't take any of these people as personal friends. I see what they're doing and trying to do for the village. And even if they're not my friend, I can say at least they're trying. So I have a major problem with the fact that the way the mayor treats certain people, select people, and the way he downs others is really bad. It's really bad. And I, again, have to say, I appreciate the new trustees and you for the stamina and the guts to stand up to it.
Well, let, let me tell you this, Judy, and that you just stated, actions speak louder than words. Just let me give you a few things that you can look at and then you form your own opinion and anyone else can. You know, he refused to attend the vouch, the Halloween walk and trunk or treat, didn't come to that. He refused to participate in a meeting that we tried to get between him and the senior citizens group, even though Rosie said when I was, when we did that before, it was me, Rose, some of the people in the senior citizens, and the mayor. She said I did more harm than good, but I, we alleviated the problem. I don't know where she got that from. And all you have to do is ask the seniors. Don't ask Rose, Rose will tell you what she wants to ask the seniors. Refused to attend the corn and dog roast. Always, every mayor since I've been here, even when I was mayor, attended the corn and dog roast. Refused to participate and allow public to participate in meetings. Refused to answer questions during village meetings. Refused to accept his responsibilities and bully others. Refused to participate, they had a community prayer. Refused to come out, but he's religious. And so, you know, but he refused to come out to that. And I go on and on and on. All you have to do is look at his record since he's been, when he was appointed by this board as mayor, he told us then what he was going to do and it never happened. Who said to me? I never said I was mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, no. No, 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 no. No, I'm sorry, no, I was telling the mayor. Nope. Uh, but he refused to do that. But he claimed that there's some things that are called saving initiatives. The cost-saving initiatives that he has, that he put in place was to have less meetings. Where is that cost-saving? That's saving money because he doesn't have to pay the trustees. That's six trustees he doesn't have to pay for those meetings. Himself and the clerk get paid. They get paid. If they have one meeting this year, they get their full check. You have to have, they don't have to have any money because they get a salary. So, you know, that's what I'm talking about. We have to, you have to look at certain things, take it with a, with a grain of salt, drink some water with it and swallow it down, because that's exactly how it's done. Larry, if I give you the mic?
If, if?
Okay, when I give you the mic, if you-
Got it.
If you become too personal, I will cut it off. Okay, okay.
Well, what I have to say is, uh, I really was inspired with Veterans Day. That inspired me. I wasn't a vet myself, but what I saw, when I saw them vets up there was eye to eye. And I, I congratulate the people that put that together. That's not getting personal, is it? But what I want to say is, I've been, I was in Fort Heights today, I had lunch, I had lunch at Fort Heights. I didn't talk to the mayor, but, um, there were about 50, 60 people that had lunch in Fort Heights. They have Wednesday for families. Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, they have it for seniors. What do we have here? Never mind, I've been on that road. I was in a, stepped in a computer class, they have in Fort Heights. They had 15 people studying on their computers, learning things. What do we have in Saw Village? Because of the division that I see we have, and I understand, you know, you, you went through a list of divisionary issues, didn't sound good to- Didn't sound good to me. Because I look at this board, and I don't think I'll name names, but I roll around the board. That person there, I helped get in. The 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 person sitting in the middle, I helped get in. The person sitting there, I helped, wait a minute. I helped get in. The person on that fire, I helped get in. The person there, I helped get in. You know what they've done for me? Bingo. Understand this. I'm not looking for nothing. What I did, I did for myself. I was the housing commissioner for seven and a half years. As you spoke of that one head of housing, he was nothing without me. I sat on top of other managers' managers. The senior building, as it was put, I was there periodically. My gosh, we dealing with somebody with dementia. I was there holding their hand, helping them walk because they weren't capable of it. They're not in their right mind. And yet, they're going to exclude me? I don't care. Because guess what? I'm about South Village. As I see, I backed the three trustees in this last election. I am so proud. They won. And yet, I hear a housing person that did win talk about the two people sat on either side of him as a Bible toter and a child molester. Are they true? Yeah.
Larry, yeah.
I didn't get, I didn't say no names.
But you didn't personally.
Didn't say no names.
No, but, I mean, you're a person.
Guess what? If you know a name, take it with you.
It's not the name.
Well, let me finish.
Okay.
See, so, and then as of this week, I've heard Fort Heights is doing better than South Village. They're doing better. But is it because they're capable? Or is it that we're not? Or is it the fact that we have this division that is very strong? You know, we have division. Believe me, the division is killing us. I'm ignored by some of the people on that board. Guess what? Because I may not agree with them. If you think that's something, wait till you see the next election. See, because I still won't agree with them. I promise you. And that's not personal.
No, not personal.
That's political.
Yeah, and we're not getting political.
My gosh, we're about as political as we could be being here next. Don't be not able about this. This is political.
No, it's not. Yes, sir.
Well, I got a couple of comments. The South Village Citizen of Public Awareness has a meeting the second Saturday.
Talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry. The South Village Citizen of Public Awareness has meetings second Saturday of every month. And our goal is to let residents know what's actually going on in the village. We don't try to persuade anybody. We're just giving facts based on.
You evidently, you do, but you better keep my name out of your mouth. I'm gonna tell you that.
Wait a minute. What's wrong? Excuse me. Excuse me. What's? Well, then you all need to talk about that outside. Don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that. If you want to talk to him outside, I've no problem with that.
Tell him to come outside.
Well, it's up to him, but I can't tell anybody. But don't come and do that, trustee. I don't do that at your meetings. Thank you. Go ahead. I don't do that at your meetings. I don't. Larry, Larry, we know, I told you before, we don't do that. Trustee, if you want to talk to him, take him outside, talk to him, but not doing the meeting. This is with the meeting, this is town hall. This ain't a bitch session.
I know all of that.
Okay, then that's all I'm asking you.
I apologize to you for that, but I'll see if you come outside.
Okay, well, that's up to him.
I'm already outside.
Bernice.
My name is Bernice Brewer. On behalf of the South Village Citizen of Public Awareness, we have meetings second Saturday every month at the community center. And our goal is to let the residents know what's happening. We don't sway you or anything. We're just giving facts based on what's given to us. And we would like you guys to come out and join us and, you know, bring somebody in. You might have a problem, your problem or solution on how to do certain things. And we would, you know, welcome you guys. And since we have all this division, we like, enjoy. Everybody come. Everybody come. We have people all connected there. So it would be a good learning experience just to work together. So I invite you guys to come second Saturday of every month at the community center at 10 o'clock. But my comment is that one of the, one of the things that we're working on is the access to the senior center. Now, the senior relaxation organization is part of the South Village Citizen of Public Awareness. And we're trying to run a program today, just like Mr. Stewart said, and have all these things out here in the South Village. You know, we're willing to do this. We're volunteer people who have our programs all set up. We have to run against a bunch of stumbling blocks with the mayor and certain trustees about letting us use the senior center. So that's one of our goals now, to get space in the senior center, which we have. When it has like 15 days out of a month that's not active, and we're there, and we can run our program. That's if we, and it won't cost the people anything. So we're working on getting that. In fact, on December 1st, we have a meeting with the mayor here in the town hall to get the senior relaxation organization a regular day. We had one for two years, but the chairperson decided she wants to take it over. So we need to run our own program. So I implore you guys to come over and join us, that you guys might have some ideas on how we can get this thing done. And the last thing I want to talk about is, yes, we have a lot of disrespect going on. I'm here mostly every Tuesday, and I have been threatened, you know, with, "I'm gonna put you out," or "I'm gonna call the police," but I'm back here every Tuesday. So you guys got to be diligent on what you do. You pay tax dollars, and I pay big time tax dollars where I live. So I need to know what they're doing with my tax dollars. So I implore you guys to come on Tuesday and just sit and watch and listen and see how disrespectful this board, and I'm not, you know, we know who we're talking about, treat the residents who actually pay their tax dollars. So you guys need to come out and just sit and listen. And for the mayor to publicly admonish certain poories, you know, that's not right. So something needs to be done about that. And also, in the last couple of months, we haven't heard words like civil war. We have heard words about like overseers. You know, this is 2015. Some people need to get over it, you know. So I'm just saying, if you bold enough to come out there and say those words in public, then you need to be bold enough to take the kind of crap that we're gonna give you, the kind of stuff that we're gonna give you. Because we pay taxes, we want our place at the table, just like everybody else. And with that, I'm gonna cut it off because I'm starting to be short with mine. And I'm not playing with them. I'll be here next Tuesday, on December 1st, to complain about the senior center and why taxpayers can't use it. I pay taxes, and I want a place at the table.
Okay, I think that's what happened. I think your group is the CPA, and the seniors center, I'm sorry, senior board are going to have an agenda, and they're going to present, I don't know, I think the seniors are going to present their policy, which I didn't know that they rewrote a policy. And then I guess you guys are going to present what it is that you want. And that's something that I'm looking forward to seeing, how it's going to be taken care of. Because you're right, senior center is for the seniors. It's not for a certain set of people. It's not for a group, a whatever you want to call it. You know, it's for the seniors to come out and commiserate, to talk. You've got cable there, you've got tables there, you've got crafts there, you've got a kiln there. So it's for them to come out and enjoy. And it should be open, me, myself. I have a mother that's in an assisted living. And you should have a volunteer list where you have somebody that can come each and every day, like you do with other things, sign up to be a chaperone to make sure that people, when they come in, don't, you know, destroy the place. And that's all you really need. You have television. We pay for cable. The village is paying for the cable that's in there. They're paying for the Wi-Fi that's there. And the village, the village is paying for that. So why not be able to do that and then have programs? I can understand you have a calendar. But it shouldn't be that you can't come in this particular time because that group is meeting. Okay. If your group, if they have days, then everybody should have days, each and every group. And they don't, and that's something that I firmly believe.
What they, they didn't come in, certainly, what they did was the senior relaxation organization had set days, and they were there. And then, and then the senior committee chairperson decided that she wanted to have her group there on those days. And she came in and ran her program and just ignored the senior relaxation.
That's why I said, you're right. That's why I said the mayor should intervene. You know, everybody knows, everybody knows, this is not brand new. This is, this just happened overnight. This has been going on for a while, for years, a few years. You know, things have changed. This village has changed. We need to change with it. Ms. Park has something. Can I?
A few years ago, there was two, maybe three senior groups. Is there only one now?
No, there's still Sunshine, Leisure Time.
Bluegrass.
No, Bluegrass is not a group. They are a, Bluegrass, they're a band. But the groups, they have little plaques up on the wall. Sunshine, Leisure Time, and there's another one. I'm not sure.
And they all.
In the fun club.
They all have their set time.
They all have.
Where they can use the facility.
They have, they're on the calendar. They're on the calendar for their date.
Who's calendar?
Okay.
There's a senior calendar in there.
The Silver Sneakers are there.
Silver Sneakers is just a exercise group that comes in.
They run their program.
And they run their program through the auspices of the senior citizens, senior groups.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, on Tuesdays. But they're not a group, they're running it with upwards, that's what they, they talk to, I guess, like I said, the seniors. Senior citizens group or board to have, they're coming that day for just that. They're not there for, they're there for exercise.
It's a point is they run their program so.
But that's up to the, up to the senior citizens board.
No.
No, seniors.
They don't have a policy.
Okay. Anyway, that's how they got in there, is what I'm saying. Yes, Ms. Park?
Yes, I've been to a lot of meetings. This is the most disgusting, that a trustee that came in here and was attacking another resident, maybe not a resident, but an individual. Because he felt he had something to say. And she said, "Come on, let's go outside. Let's go outside." What, are we in a bar? What's wrong with that woman?
Talk to me.
Why talking to you?
Good, talk to me. Let's go outside. I ain't got no problem talking to you, nobody else. You know, I didn't come to see you, but I had to see you.
Trustee, trustee.
I don't care what you think about me.
You're the heart, I don't care what you think about me.
Okay, we're not going, we're not, we are not.
I'm not through. This man is ill, and she's here attacking him. Why?
I don't know why she came. Obviously.
That's how they want.
Ms. Harris.
Intimidation, intimidation.
You don't, Larry, Larry, we're not going to get credentialed. We're not going to do this. We're not going to do this. She came in here, she, that's on the trustee. She broke the meeting up, that's on her. I'm not going to go back and forth with the dialogue. You guys here are grown. I'm not going to sit here and dissect every little thing that happened. She came in, she walked in, she made the comment, didn't ask anything, fine. I'm not going to sit here and say, "Well, you got," no, I'm not the mayor. I'm not going to sit and tell you what you can and cannot do. I'm not going to do that. If she decided to come in and say that, that's on, that's on the trustee. She's grown. All I ask is not to do it in this meeting. You have a problem with somebody, please take it outside. But I'm not going to scold or anything like that because that's not on me. You guys here know.
Can I finish my comment?
You were through because she was.
No, tell me, finish something I don't know about.
Well, okay.
I got a question. Why is it that U.S. investigation can have room in this village rent-free when I pay taxes and I can use the senior citizens?
That's something, see, those questions, I hope you wrote that down. So when you talk to the board and you talk on Monday or Tuesday night, that you have those same questions that can be written down as part of the meeting. It could go into the minutes as part of the meeting. Because that's where it needs, that's where it needs to be. You're right. Ask those kind of questions then. That's why we have this meeting, so we can talk. And I can give you a direction.
The mayor, the mayor, you want it that way.
Well, then that's, that's a good question needs to be brought up.
I've asked this question before.
Like I said earlier, you need to keep asking those questions. Yes?
Let me, can I say one thing?
It's your canvas, Tom. Please let me speak.
I would like to make a point to trustee Washington. You're running for mayor. Is she the people's lord? So you're not, and you identify, hold on. Let me say my part to you.
Mr. Harvey.
Let me say this. You identify yourself as a Christian. You're not acting like a Christian now. You're not acting like a Christian now. You're not. I don't know. You talk. You need, you need.
Mr. Harvey.
But you need people.
Mr. Harvey. This town hall meeting is not about. It's not about.
How common sense?
Mr. Harvey, this town hall meeting is not about trustee Washington. She came in and said, "But she had to say, 'Fine.'" We're not going, I'm not going to go back and forth. I'm not going to get credentialed. We're not going to do that. We're going to sit here and discuss the things that we have to discuss about the village. If it was a personal thing, then you're right, you need to talk to her outside. But I'm not going to bring up the fact that she walked in and said, "Can I see you outside?" Instead of doing that, that's on her. We saw this. I'm not going to linger on. This is my town hall meeting. I will run a meeting where the people are involved, but they will not, and that's one of the things I said, will not bash one another right there. That's not going to happen. We're not going to bash one another. If you want to go outside, it's home, whatever, that's your business. That's Mr. Harvey. Okay.
I got a question.
There you go.
About the village. My question is, the light of 223th and 224th, those lights are still off at streetlights.
Now, you're right, because you asked about that at the last meeting.
Let me finish one. See, the people that is employed by this, they should have concern about the citizens. Okay, you had people don't care, used to have bad, you know, crime over there. This area has been mired. But as long as they dark, you can count on people breaking people out, breaking people cars. You can count on these things happening. Now, I think the village should try to, you know, keep things crime low. We should try to keep crime low. So if this is, the mayor don't tell me to run, you probably want to wait for another light. The light, the new lights, when they bring up the new light. But people don't wait for light to rub up. They rub in the dark, most of them in the night, in the day, even though they're robbing me today now too. But when you, the more light is a rub, you, it's harder for them to be seen. So I hope that, you know, light comes. So I talked to the mayor, he won't listen.
Okay, well, let me tell you this. You did bring this up several times at the meetings, at the, after the meetings. I heard you talk to him several times. You had this on about 224th and 223rd, and the lights are still out. The village administrator heard you, the mayor heard you, the board heard you, and it's still dark. I will, myself, come down here tomorrow and ask Kevin, I got your phone number, and ask him what, definitively, what's. I will myself come down here tomorrow and ask Kevin, I got your phone number, and ask him what, what definitively, what's wrong. If it's a balance that's out, then tell me. If the bulb is out, we've had, this has been going for three months that I know of. You know, people went to wherever it has to go, there's no replacing lights right now on Torrance Avenue and also on, um, Salt Trail. If that's a bulb, then give one of those blue bulbs to that place that they'll be lighting. But, 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 to Kevin, sit up and give you excuses, they don't live there, who's in front of their house, you better leave it, they don't. So I'll be personally, you know me, I will find out tomorrow, I gotta come up here tomorrow for one other person. I'll find out tomorrow about that too, because you've asked too many times.
Kevin said outside, it's, it's much easier to speak it on you.
Well, I, I, I don't have to tell him that. I don't have to tell him that, but I will find out from you, and I will get, I will call you back tomorrow, let you know what was said. And I will, you know, I just don't wanna call right now, I can't call Kevin, but I'm not gonna do that, I'll, I'll wait to business out.
Is he gonna answer?
Who? Will he answer me? Yes. Yeah, I mean, you all think that, but yeah, no, here we go. I'm not saying that he gonna give an answer already here, but he'll ask. Well, I, I, I've been to his office a lot of times, so yes, I'm not, what office you been to over there where he's at? Yeah, they have a way of not letting you, they even tried to not let you get in, so, yeah, uh, don't worry about it, you know, they're employees. Who's next?
I have a statement. We have a house on 2030 218th Street. The fire, a hydrant.
Twenty, wait a minute, 2030 218?
2030 218th Street.
Uh-huh.
The water has been running at that hydrant for the last two and a half years.
Oh, okay, at that, go ahead.
Answer me, just wait back.
Okay, that house, um, I actually went there, knocked on the door, and the one came, but I did, I did find out about that house. And I will ask Kevin about that too, because he told me, what happens when you have, when you have a break in a, um, fire hydrant? You have a disconnect right there by that fire hydrant. If that disconnect does not shut the water off, and you take that hydrant off, it's over. So that means they have to go to where they call the line, and, and, and shut that off on either side, if you see, until that. If those, if one of those don't hold, then you can't, then you gotta go to the next one. So that's what they're having a problem with, and that's been going on for almost a year now. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna find out again, because that's, that's what we're here. And it's gonna cost, you know, I, I don't know if there's someone looking at whether we, which they will have to shut down that neighborhood to fix that fire hydrant.
Not a problem.
And that's, that's, that's what has to be done, and somebody should have done this a long time ago. So that's, that, that has to be done, and I will find out from him the status on 2030 218th, 'cause I did go by here to talk, try to talk to her, but she wasn't there.
You know what that's like in West Town?
Yes, it was like an ice rink. Yes, and they, and they said it got so short on it, yes, ma'am. So I was hoping they would get it done, I'm talking about this about three weeks ago. And I went over there about a month ago, so I'm hoping that, that at least we're coming close. Bernice is there.
I still have another.
Are you fired?
There's another house, 2500, Telandus. They say that across the street is a jungle, and they look at the address. They have been talking to the mayor, they have talked to public works, they've talked to housing, they're not getting anything. So I'm just telling you the people that are.
Two houses.
Three houses.
Three houses in a row now.
Okay, so you said 2500 Telandus?
Yes.
And the problem is?
Garden.
Oh, garden, is the house inhabitable, or is it, is it?
No.
Also, this is an uninhabitable home?
And a house.
And two houses and lots. I'm trying to get another one, hold on a second.
Okay.
I would tell you these things if I saw you, but.
Okay, but can you get some more, can you get the mic to Bernice, you have another one?
Just to let you know that, uh, that, uh, the owner that lives across the street from, uh, the house you talked about in Telandus, he came to, uh, town hall meeting, but he's there, and they were supposed to, uh, uh, address that issue, so I don't know what happened. But anyway, what I wanted to talk about is, in response to your request, uh, in 2009, there was 23% water loss. And a couple of weeks ago, uh, the village administrator talked about going after residents for paying, not paying their water bill and stuff like that. So however, uh, to get an update, there, there is now a 32% water loss in the village, I got the paperwork and everything. So my question is to you, you, the administration is going after the residents to pay the water bill, but we are being, we've been charged $2,000 to, for infrastructure improvement, I don't know when that was, just recently. But my question is to you, what is this administration doing, or going to do, or should have been doing, because you're getting our money, to improve the water, infrastructure improvement? Because it went from 23 to 32, and it's not changing, people are not paying their water bills, but yet you guys, you know, trying to go after the residents? When, when, uh, the board is not doing what they're supposed to do in order to get the infrastructure, uh, what did I say? Repair, because we paying for it, so I wanna know, and it's not any budget, what are you guys prepared to do? I know it's late in the game now, but you just say that when you click, not your butt. What are you guys gonna do to get this infrastructure improved? Because there's no money that's been put into the system since 1957. We'd like to know what's going on.
Okay, first of all, I don't know where you got those numbers.
I got the numbers, it was five.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I didn't see, I never saw 32%, that we went from.
I got paperwork.
Okay, I'm not disputing that, so I can't answer that question as far as 23 to 32. I, I, I don't know, um, I was under the impression that we were actually moving, changing that to a single digit.
No.
In order for us to get water, we have to be a single digit. Now, as far as raising the rates, that was already voted on, that 750 was voted on in the last, um, not the last election, but I think that was in 2011. It was moving on to raise the rates up until this last raise, it went from 350 to 750, $2 each and every year until it got to 750. That extra money, you're absolutely right, was supposed to be put in to do infrastructure repairs. Um, why it hasn't been done, only God knows, and he not talking. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I'm not the one to answer that, because I'm not even, because I wouldn't even talk about the 23 to 32%, so I really feel out of the loop on that one. Um, as far as the people paying their water bills, that was an amendment, that was something that trustee Myers and his committee, and went out, and also, uh, they petitioned Downstate to do with a lot of other municipalities, including Chicago. That if you don't pay your water bill after a certain period of time, will pay you municipal, um, fines after a certain period of time, it didn't go after your paycheck. That was enacted down in Springfield, and Springfield went along with it, so now, when you have, your money goes over an excessive amount, you'll be turned over to an agency who advocates Downstate to have your paycheck, um, as they call it garnish, or they take a certain percentage out. And I'm sure some of that is gonna be their, um, their cost, their administrative cost, but now they're gonna attach that to your paycheck, and to your taxes. When you get tax refund, that's gonna be on there too. So that's something that your money, we, we, we do that, but we don't take care of the things, and you absolutely are.
My question is, isn't that consumer problem, you guys are taking our money to do something, to get something fixed, we never get any results from it? So it seems like maybe you guys are just gouging the, uh, residents here, money, money this, money, money that, but we not getting any goods and services for what we paying out for?
And remember, at the very beginning.
You know I come here.
At the very beginning, of this town hall meeting, I stated that you need to have more people other than just you, to come out and say the same thing. If you get enough people out here saying the same thing, they're gonna do something. We, we, that's why, you know, you have some people that feel this way, some people that feel that way, and that's why you have division. You have to come out and express your opinion as taxpayers, as citizens of the village, and let everybody know, this is how you feel. And that's what the meetings are for, not for just us backing for, our backing for, you have to let the people know that, okay, you got my money. What have you done, and let's go with, not personal, not go back and forth personality, talk and let them know, this is my money. The village levies every year for your money, you need to find out what you're doing, and get a report on what, how your money is being spent. Yes, Ms. Parker? Uh-oh.
This is not a question, but you got a problem in the men's bathroom, it's running all over the floor.
Yeah, man?
I don't want you guys to get in trouble for it, but it's running all over.
What's one? This one? Man, what's one?
It was mentioned some month or two ago, probably two, about, um, and it was mentioned in a meeting, one of the meetings. Um, why don't we have a report about money coming into the village?
Collector's report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you ever done a?
We haven't, okay, your collector's report is not itemized.
And why not?
Well, it's, it's, it's generalized, it's generalized. In other words, it says property tax. When you get property tax, not from just the, the, um, the, um, homeowner, you can property tax it from the business too.
Then why can't it be?
Those are the questions.
Not generalized?
Absolutely, it should be. You should know what you got coming in, someone made a comment, and I didn't say anything, I was hoping that they would speak up. But someone made a comment, that this last, um, expecting, I'm sorry, um, collector's report, we collected in the last two months, $6 million. And they made a comment, why we broke?
Yeah.
That should be explained, it should be explained where the money goes. And if, if that was the case, that we collected 6 million, is it still? I can stop, I need to go in my car and get a, a red light and stop.
Call them out.
What would you do?
They not gonna come out now?
That's different.
Sure. It's an emergency.
There's, there's, there's a sewer right there, there's one right now. I used to, oh, yeah, I used to do that so that.
You don't do it, I'm just gonna, uh, uh, uh.
But no, but, but no, you're, you're right.
Okay.
It should be, you know, because if you look at the collector's report, you collected 4 million in one time, and 2 million in the next month. But then we're broke, because of reason.
That may be, may, may, why the mayor says, "Don't worry about buying all, all of these, um, uh, computer programs for the dispatchers." The money will come from somewhere, don't worry about this and that, the money will come from.
The money, right.
It may be.
Well, I'm gonna tell you now.
Something from somewhere that you don't, that I don't know about.
Speaking as a trustee right now, yes, we don't have money, we just have, barely have money to pay payroll.
I believe, I truly do, that if the village had people that would, are willing to look over the reports that are generated, that things would change.
Yes.
And if you had the income report, things would change much quicker than I.
And you're right.
And you go for it.
They used to, uh, the auditors used to come in and give us what they call their, um, outlook, and what we should and shouldn't do, and how we should do our funds. He used to give a report, in summary of what, I haven't got one in a couple of years. We used to give one, find out where you should do this, when you move money from point A to point B, it should be a paper trail, so you can give that back, because you still owe it. It would be the same thing, if you went to the bank and borrowed X amount of money from a bank, you borrowed from a fund, you should pay it back with interest, that's how you accumulate funds. Just gonna pay it out of this pocket, put it in that pocket, and let it, let it be. You're absolutely right, a real account, we came in here, you know, he looks at you, we're, we're not, okay, we're not bankrupt, we're, but we're living, but we know we have so much money that we owe, that, you know, and then we created new debt. New debt is the police sheet, that's new debt, that was not in there.
There's more than just.
But it, it, it's just more than just that. There's money, and, and that was the reason why, we were supposed to save money with Calcom and everything, but there's so many others, the same cost now is exceeded.
Then that's the reason why you should have this as a, as a.
But we have, we have, we have, we have a financial, uh, director, financial director. But, but, but he's being controlled. So when you don't let, reason why you don't let people know what you're doing, there's a reason. There's a reason why you don't let your board, only some of the people on the board know what's going on, that's what I have to kick against. You can't tell me that I went ahead on my word and I did this, your word don't mean nothing to me, I know your record. Your word doesn't mean, but if you write it down, that we took X amount of money and get the okay from the board, now you, now that's transparency.
If you were a church congregation, I, I don't care whether it's, it's tax deductible or not, if you were a congregation, or a corporation, a company of some kind, do you have people to answer to for your money? Are you for sure only what you paid out?
You do that first time. That first time you assure it's on, you won't be a second.
That's what I'm.
You, you, you assure it to them that first time, yes, you will. That's why you have checks and balances, that's why you don't have, you have, that's why you have a board. That's your checks and balances, when you, when you circumvent your board, now you no longer have checks and balances. When you have one person that's gonna speak for the whole board, then why are the rest of us sitting there without time and, and everything? If we don't have any say so. That's because when the feds come in, when they come back and say, "You had X amount of money, or you spent it on this," you can't sit up and say, "I didn't know, no, you should have known." Because you're the one that we put in place to make sure you know, and if you don't know, shame on you, and just like you did a ticket. And you say, "I didn't know what the speed limit was," tell it to the judge.
Then it has to be stopped.
We tried to, but then we didn't talk about shot down, I don't care, you talking about me on your office, but you didn't talk about shot down because you're trying to make it work. First, you have to change things.
Yeah, see, my girl, but anyway, you should let the people know about how they just passed, you guys, the board just passed an ordinance to, um, limit the fiduciary duties of the trustees, that gave them to, was it Mohan and the mayor? And they could sign an emergency check, those are things people should know.
Okay, what you're talking about is, there was a amendment, I'm sorry, a policy put in place, that was moving on at the last, um, session, at the last board meeting, that states that if there's any, um, immediate checks written. Instead of holding the board, calling them up, or having a special meeting, that one person, that person being the, I guess, the financial, the finance, um. Chairperson for that committee, that chairman. That chairman can give the okay, the mayor, and the, um, um, get a chairman and administrator. That's all they need consensus from those, two of those three, two of those three. Other words, if you have to, to pay something that's immediate, that you don't have to ask the board under $10,000, you can ask those three, and if those, two of those three says it's okay, the mayor can sign the check. So, um, now, that, you're right, that takes away the power of the trustees, because the trustees are supposed to be, supposed to be the overseer of the money. I have a problem with someone talking for what I was elected for. I was elected to make sure that the money is spent, and I can come back and tell the people how the money is being spent, and, and where it's going. But if I don't know, then they look at me and say, "Well, wait a minute, why are you, why, why are you even there?"
What was the vote count then?
The vote count was, thank for two, I mean, 331, okay, 331.
And, uh, the mayor?
331. That's what the vote count was.
So does the trustee in charge of this, uh, financial thing, is that trustee aware that all they have to do is the mayor and JW assign a check, and they don't even have to tell her either?
That trustee that you're talking about helped write that, helped write it up. The fact that the one that helped write that.
Well.
I heard something, I heard something to say about him, and I had something that I wrote about each one of their comments, and it still didn't make a difference, it was.
That was a slap in the face to the trustees and they couldn't see it.
I don't see why.
Bobble your head and go with the mayor.
Why would you give up your right to be involved in the financials of this village? I would give this, if it's a hundred dollars, that's one thing, but you're gonna spend five thousand dollars on something, and then also to make a vendor an immediate check, never heard of. Never heard, vendors know that the village pays them as they get paid. But to make a vendor an immediate check, why, why are they so, you know, because we do owe vendors thousands and hundreds and thousands of dollars, they wouldn't give it to we here.
How do you describe the bug people, are they vendors?
The who?
The bug people.
Okay, I, I, you talking about US investigation, they don't get a check from us.
Wow.
They don't get a check from us, they don't, they don't get a check from us. So, I mean, they use our space, but they don't give a check from us.
But they're a business, would you not consider a business?
Well, they have a business, but they, they still, they don't, they don't, they don't work for us, they, they got, they got space into a, in a room. But they don't, we don't, we don't pay them anything, no. But you do have other vendors that got immediate checks and that was part of that.
How many times or how often does the report come out as to the money that's being brought into the village?
It should come out every quarter, every three months it should come out for the, um, collector's report.
So, does anybody know the last time one went out?
Just, it just, it just, they just talked about August and September at the last meeting. It was just two months, August and September.
But this is Don River.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you what happened, it came out August and September.
Oh, okay.
Was that this year?
Yes, August and September this year, that's why a person asked me about that, that's why I said the way you read it, that we took in six million in two months.
And tell me, do we have to FOIA it or is it available to the public?
Depends on who and who you are and who you ask.
In other words, all of you that are here, put in a FOIA. Give J.W. something to do.
Okay, and you want, yes, you got some more addresses?
No, I, I got a whole development, thank you.
Oh.
Um, a lady that called and had, they, because of the high winds, they had possible tree damage detrimental to the kids and the waters and sidewalks to those.
Okay, where's that?
They wanna know if, they wanna know are you gonna pick up, um, limbs with the leaves or do they have to wait until spring?
I'm going to have to defer to that one because I think they had the last leaf pickup. Limp pickup, but I, limp, but I will ask about that.
Because we got the high winds today, so the, uh, especially.
Well, and then because, okay, you, you, you can get back, these people left, something you can get back to them?
Oh, you got a whole development that's coming after we finish here.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Deer Creek is saying that with those dead trees that we've had for the past two and a half years, the kids are standing on the corner waiting for the bus and the tree limbs are breaking off over their heads. So you see them littered all in the yard, and they're kind of concerned about that. So they need to know, what are you gonna do about that, um, this spring? Or is it something that the mayor can talk about that he's going to take care of these trees?
Are these the dead trees, these are ash, emerald ash trees, correct?
These are the dead trees, and the development.
And you wanna know?
And the limbs are breaking off.
You wanna know what they go, I did through.
What's the plan?
I did through with the emerald ash this year.
Right, well, what's the plan to remove this tree? Next thing, um, sunken sidewalks.
Yes.
The kids are falling and, um, terriers, uh, school payers, because they're falling off of these uneven sidewalks in Deer Creek. So they wanna know, what are you gonna do, because now everything is becoming detrimental to the kids. And they're complaining about their eight thousand dollars in taxes that they're paying. They don't care about what you and the mayor and everybody else is fighting about. They wanna know where their tax dollars are to take care of the services that they are due.
Okay.
All right?
You know, that's good, because I'm supposed to be part of Public Works Committee and, uh, me and trustee, um, um, Joe was supposed to be, we're trying to schedule a meeting with the mayor so we can find out his direction before I go any further on that. I'm not going to go any further than I found out what he wants, those people like Tommy, like you stated, um, they wanna know certain things. Um, but I will, on my own, find out about the limbs, um, in, the limbs period throughout the village. Are they, are they through picking them up? Also about the leaves, the correct date on that, I need to get her address. Um, plan to remove the emerald ash trees, not just in Deer Creek, but all over, but I, when, they wanna know when and what's the plan and what's the date they're gonna start in Deer Creek.
I got one question.
Dr. College, Mr. Stewart, go ahead. Go ahead, who has a mic?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, then you have to defer, this gentleman hasn't had a chance to talk, go ahead, sir, sir. Go ahead, you, you haven't had a chance to talk.
Yeah, we've been, I've been here quite a bit, but I've been in Salt Village for about ten months, but it seems as if I've been here like for a long time. I like Salt Village, but from what I gathered, a lot of things will change to our expectations with this administration. But in the meantime, you know, we have to fight for what belongs to us. Just like how we come to this town meeting, we need to come up here Tuesday. Please send an email, please, to remind me.
It won't be, it'll be the first Tuesday in December, there are no more meetings this month.
Okay, please send us an email, because if we get this much people plus some more, which I know, we have a big gallery.
Yes.
You know, that would help. Salt Village, what I realize out here, if you own something, you got to balance it for it, you got to. You know, when I first came to Deer Creek, there was a lot of battle. I call these people at night, I go up here, but I didn't stop until they came and fixed it. So if we come out like Tuesdays, like now, something will be done. You know, if we keep coming out, more will be done until the administration change. But in the meantime, it's about to evolve. But if we stick together, everything will be alright.
Okay, who's next?
Trustee Burgess.
Yes, ma'am.
If you, if you go on the internet, um, the little guy, brothers that can and will.
Yes.
You can get all of this, including the dates with meetings.
Okay, no, I mean, you, you can get it also if you come to the meetings, um, it, it's, it's about all of what, when you say all of this, when you mean?
I mean, uh, this meeting.
All, all these meetings, you see these cameras, right? Okay, so there's gonna be, but you still need to come out and express.
I know, but then persons can know to come out.
Yes, and they should, they should learn to come out and, um, um, you know, express their opinion.
Well, sometimes they just, you know, if it's something like eBay, just like myself.
Okay, well, from now on, I'm gonna stop at your house. And say, and just like you saw in the, you saw the marquee in Deer Creek today, right? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start making sure to be utilized that. So, yeah, that'll be done. Leonard, I will let you speak if it's not gonna be personal, but usually do not let the trustees speak to the mayor or any other, um, elected official, so I'm asking if it's not personal.
Trustee Burgess, I wanna say to you that I apologize to you for disrupting your meeting inadvertently. I did not start the disruption tonight, I came to take care of some business, but I would apologize to you as a co-trustee. You have attended many of my meetings and I've never had enough of her respect for us.
Thank you. Anybody else? On your way, I said, give the vote, anybody want to talk?
Nope.
Bernie, France, eh?
France.
Hold on.
No, I don't. Um, trustee Burgess, I have not had an opportunity to, to attend a meeting recently, so I am asking just one quick question. I have received, um, uh, information in the Salt Hall that was sent out by the mayor that showed, um, traffic lights and put, uh, the different budget items on red, yellow.
Are you talking about the analogy, that was?
The analogy, yes, and I would like to know, do, do you recognize that there was no information about the incoming, uh, money for our budget and when was that money received? As well as, the only thing that that traffic light showed us was that what monies was budgeted and that it was spent. Whether it was spent the total amount, what percentage was spent, was not comprehended. So, I look at it as propaganda that was sent to the village residents to make this administration look as if they were spending our money responsibly, which we know is not being done. So, I would like to say, for one comment is that, can you and your committee, I don't know if you still have that, um, interim denomination?
If you're willing, trustee, uh, taste is in charge of that now.
Oh, okay, well, can someone also put an article in Salt Hall that explain to residents that we do also have income and what measure money come from? As well as, just because money is budgeted, don't mean that we have it. And is there true monies there for the payment of Mr. Furman? And also for our new police chief, um, which I understand was in our budget, but we have yet to receive enough money because you guys are always drawing money in order to make change. Can you make comments on those two things for me?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanna let everybody know, speaking from me, those questions came from an ex-trustee, which means she already knows the answers, but she wants me to put them out there. Absolutely, there, a budget is a piece of paper. I can write on there one million dollars, and behind that I can say I owe you. Does that mean that the budget is balanced? Don't. When you have, in order to balance a budget, you have, you, but the first thing you look at is what you did last year. If last year you only got in fifty thousand dollars for this particular thing, when, when is it gonna change that you say only sixty thousand? You can speculate all you want, does it not stop, Mark? We don't control what comes in, we hope that it comes in, we hope the government pays our taxes on time, we hope that we can get money from, uh, building provisions, we hope that we have ongoing, um, somebody to come out and, and, and actually pay some, for some of the services that we have, but there's no guarantee. Only thing close to being a guarantee, your property tax, that's the only thing that's close to being a guarantee, because you pay them. However, if last year you had nine thousand people to pay property tax and this year you only got five thousand people, but your budget went up for some work, come on. That doesn't take a market scientist to figure that out. If you got less people than you had last year living in the village this year, but you're gonna speculate that you're gonna spend more money, what's the definition of crazy? Doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result. So, that's what is happening. That's why I was against the budget, that's why I was against it, because in actual, and the trustee knows what I'm talking about, and anyone here that's dealt with money knows your checkbook. When you get paid, and you get paid on Wednesday, but you write that check on Monday, what are you doing? You hope that when it gets there, that you got that money back. I would ask you, I'll be, you have a glitch, and that money doesn't get there, and now you raising back and forth to go back to those people, you wrote that check and say, hey, 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 hold it, if it didn't meet tap, they gonna tell you? Gotta charge you for NSF, 'cause it is, when I put it in my bank, it was NSF. So, you know, put together a budget that you, you always underestimate. If you get more, it's so big, we can do so much, if you can buy, uh, a, a stand for a microphone. Put your budget in there because last year we didn't have a budget, you budget for your bare minimums. You budget for bare loans, you budget for what you had last year. And if you feel, and if you know for sure that money's gonna come in, then you're gonna come in and then you go back and sell it, you got extra money. But don't budget because the, because the government said, I'm gonna give you four point eight million dollars to pay for that loan. And then you sell it, go get four point eight million dollars and pay for that. You get ready to get a bill next year for that same money. Was that in the budget? No, because we were supposed to, at this time, pay for that. The government was supposed to say, I'm sorry, the governor that ran said that he was going to forgive that four point eight million dollars that we borrowed from a bank. We didn't borrow the money from the government, the government got us the interest loan, they got us the low interest rate. We had to borrow from a financial institution, you don't borrow money from the government, that's not gonna happen. But you had to, but they said that they would back that loan with interest. They would give, ask them to give a low interest loan because it was a government, um, um, loan that we could gain 'cause the village is the government. But guess what, that didn't happen, now we gotta scrap for that money that we gotta pay for the next twenty years, each and every year, that we thought we was gonna have, that's one of your deficits. You gotta go on and on and on, but you do not, you're absolutely right, if it's not there, you can talk all you want. Make yourself say, we're gonna save money from doing this, and let's save some money. Don't tell me I'm gonna save money by not having a board meeting. That's gonna save what? That's not, that's no money. You wanna have, you gonna save some money, let's save some money, let's everybody, everybody, uh, get down. We've hired more administrators in this village than we did employees in the last year. I don't know if I, if I have a problem with that. Have a problem with that. Administrators, everybody has a chief, now you got how many in, we got, we got so many chiefs and nobody can do the work. If you're gonna hire somebody, hire some people that can get out there, get it, get on the street, bring some money in. I hate to say it, but cold brings money in on the backs of the people, but that's, that's what happens. That's the truth of, of the government. And if not just Salt Village, just every municipality, would be truthful with the people. Couldn't hire administrators, couldn't hire people that, we gotta, you have people here, utilize them. Utilize people that you have here until such time. If you don't have money to buy a car, but you can walk in a little, what happens? So, a medic will hit their big wall. But if you got what you have and you fix that up, instead of getting a, a car note, then you patch it up until such time, your money does come in and you have a, and you have a better situation. That's how you run a government, not on speculation, not on hope, es- especially not on paper. And that's all that is. Yes, trust, come here, it's like you're sorry trustee, but you were a trustee.
I am so sorry, but I do have one additional question.
Sure.
And that is, when we have new residents, are they informed about our water holes and well three being online with air stripping and that our water is still coming, is coming from a contaminated well, a groundwater, please?
Is any new, is anybody here been here less than a year except for the gentleman in Deer Creek? Anybody else been here less than a year? Okay, I ask these gentlemen, were you informed about air stripping in the, in the wells, when you, when you moved out there? Thank you, 'cause you know.
Thank you, sir.
No, you're not, not informed. Does this lady have a question?
No, I forgot my question, it's so long that you put this. I was just, you know, I, I do have a comment though. I, I noticed that we have issues with the checking balance and, and we can't even give answers, correct answers with the municipalities here.
Yeah, we can go to the state level and we can't get answers after a while. You can petition your representative and your state senator, we complain, but you're not getting direct answers from your, your municipalities here. I know, but we keep putting them in. If we, if they keep getting these letters, and they'll get tired of getting hearing from us after a while. Because we, I mean, come on, they said they're giving you money, where's the money going? You can't explain it, you're not showing us, we're, we're residents, we're paying our taxes. So come on, get with it, just keep putting them in, they'll get tired of listening. That was my comment.
Yeah, then that's a good comment, the state reps.
Sam. I'm saying Sam. What did you say?
Uh, Representative Sam was out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's on, LG Sam, yeah, he was here, okay, no, you are, let me, let me explain something to you. Your state, okay, does anyone know who our state representatives are here in the? Anyone that visit, do, do they know who? Okay, no, state representatives. Now, I'm sorry, okay, you have three state reps, two senators, and one congressman.
Yep.
Okay, this village is split three ways for your state rep. Over in Deer Creek, your state representative is Thaddeus Jones. He's also a state representative in several other communities, Fort Knox being one of them. Over here from three ninety-four, going east now, to Torrance Avenue. Three ninety-four to Torrance Avenue, your state representative is LG Sam. And also, your state um, senator is Donnie Trotter. Donnie Trotter's a state senator from three ninety-four all the way, he's also on the village, except for Deer Creek.
What's his last name?
Donnie Trotter, he's a state senator. Now, on the other side of the floor from Torrance Avenue to Burner, your state representative is Marcus Evans. So that would be right here. No, yeah, right here going to Burner Avenue, Torrance Avenue going east to Burner would be Marcus Evans, would be your state rep. Now, the difference between state rep and state senator, a few dollars, the state, it's like, it's like the senate and the house in the United States government. You know, you have, everything goes to the representatives first, and then it goes to the senate, um, the book of that is state, go down state. Now, how much credence, I mean, whispered up, yes, they're gonna come out, but they're not going to get involved in the spending of your money. The government, US government will if there's a proprietor. If they see that there's money being spent and, you know, irregular.
They have to see it?
Yes, you can talk all you want, then come and look. Then, that's when you see people with their hands hanging back and nod their head, getting to the backseat.
What's your number?
That has not happened, but maybe three times, Detroit, um, New Orleans. And I think there's one of, but that was big proprietor. Most time they tell you, especially if it's within a year of election, they're election company. That's exactly what the judges, they will not intervene on behalf, unless it is that you can show that they're belting money. All you gotta do is go to Harvard, they still keep putting them in. They turn, they, they said all the time, this, 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 obviously it must be unfounded because they can't. Larry, I'm not gonna be, but obviously it must be unfounded because they keep saying he's doing this, this, obviously he must not be doing something because they keep putting them in, and the government doesn't, is not signing anything, so who knows what's happening there? But come, but in Detroit and New Orleans, it was definitely, definitive, so you could, you could, you could go to the state level, or to the government level downstairs, talk to, to, to the powers that be. But I'll tell you right now, first thing they say is, that people voted in, unless you can show me that he's investing money. His, his ideas may be what he may feel, who else, that particular government official, elected official, or whatever, may, they have their own opinion. So, that was a good question.
Can you tell me what happened to the uh, the uh, the uh, North Medication Fund, I think last?
The North Medication Fund?
I know, so people came out to visit, but they said only one application.
Yes, only one person so far.
Yeah, what the balance is and?
Well, there's no money dispersed yet.
No money, so the money still?
There's still two hundred and thirty-two thousand in that fund.
There were two forty last, when, I don't know.
Well, brave, brave, brave. Anything you do, be it whatever, you're gonna pay administrative costs. The lottery, yeah, lottery has forty-eight percent administrative cost and fifty-two percent fines money.
Robinson Engineering got that?
I don't know who's got it, and not just Robinson Engineering, there's other things that you have to, that go along with that. So, there's administrative costs, administrative costs will eat up your tip money. Administrative costs, if you have them, that, if you go to that, to a vendor and say, I want you to look this over, they're gonna send you a bill. That's, then nobody does something for nothing. You just have to make sure you get the bang for your buck. Yes, 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 sir, you got the money, yes, sir.
I have a, more of a concern than a question. Um, my concern, which should be a lot of people's concern in this room, um, is that the equalized assessed value of the village has gone down considerably. Um, which has resulted in extraordinarily high tax rates for the residents. Um, what is the plan or, I mean, this isn't even discussed during the budget hearings, this isn't even discussed at, at committee meetings. This is something that should be discussed all the time by all the trustees, you know? And, and I know that, that, you know, you know, we've, we've spoken about this, you know, individually, but what kind of impact is this gonna have with the tax levy that the school districts just passed? And the tax levy that the village is about to do?
Okay, first of all, let me see a hand of people that own and pay taxes in the village. Wow. I'm getting ready to tell you something that you may, you might wanna hear, I know you brought this up, but I'm just gonna tell you this. Camera, camera, whether it may be. How many people that own their own homes applied for a, um, a tax cut? But not just home set, essentially, I'm talking about here recently, last year to apply to have their taxes lowered. And how many people got their taxes lowered? Should be more than that, you guys should, okay? As I stated before, you have maybe, and you don't have to court me on this, but you have maybe three thousand homes that are on the tax rolls here in the village that pay taxes back in two thousand thirteen. The budget that reflected in two thousand fourteen reflected on that value of that many taxes, what they do is they, they look at it and they assess according to what your VAB is? And according to how much money they need to come up with to, to, to come up with what you need, what you're asking for. If you ask for five million dollars, they may cut it by five hundred thousand, but the rest of that's gonna be split between all the homes that pay taxes. Depending on where your house is, where you located, you'll pay more or less than what the average is. Now, that's then. Two thousand fourteen comes, that three thousand went to twenty-five hundred. But you still, as a village or as a municipality, are still trying to levy for that five million dollars. Now, but I gotta split that between, instead of three thousand, twenty-five hundred to get that, that means that's where your taxes go. Now, when your property value goes down again in two thousand fifteen, because what makes your property value go down are bankruptcies and foretensions. You foretowled a house, and they took a house that was, at one time was sold for a hundred and fifty thousand, and then this foretowel on itself for fifty, everybody's average goes down. So now, you're gonna pay less tax, so what are they gonna do, they may change the multiplier. God forbid that happen. They changed the multiplier, you're gonna pay more money, but I even, 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 you can't, in other words, you can't get a tax break or that because the multiplier changed. The multiplier's changed, therefore you are gonna pay for all those homes that used to be there. And like I said, I hate to tell people that because a lot of people say, well, I got to move, but it's gonna, it's happening all over. So you're not gonna move, look at it, the, the, the powers that be are gonna look to see if you warrant five million dollars for that tax money, if you warrant it. You can show that you warrant it, last year you got that kind of money, and you, and you can show that you need more, and then they're, they're, they're going to try to, you know, make sure that you try to get it. You gonna get a couple percent what you asked for, you gonna get about eighty-five percent, but it's gonna be paid for by the people that are still here paying taxes. And if you're lucky enough to get a lower rate, or lucky enough to get your taxes lower, then somebody's gotta pay, somebody's gotta pay that, to pay for that, to pay that price. They gotta find a way. And that's why I hate to tell people that, but that's the truth. That's how your taxes, that's how it's levied, you can, we can only levy so much, I think we can only levy two percent, I mean, point two, a point six percent, it's the highest we can go. Anything else I said, you gotta have a darn good reason, cause they tell you that you didn't, cause what they'll do is start telling you to lay off or cut some circles or cut this and this.
Is it based on the possibility and that's whichever is greater?
That too, that too. So, how do you raise, how do you get your property value back up? You have to bring in a commodity that people wanna move into your village. You have to sell something that says, okay, I, I wanna move to the Saw Village, and you have to create, create a ground swell where people wanna come in and do business in your village? And people wanna come and live in your village, that's, that's where you can start creating the um, property value back up. That's the only way you're gonna bring it back up, you have to have a, a cause where people wanna come and live in your village that is cost effective, that is convenient, that it, that they can feel safe. You have to create that type of atmosphere, that's hard, that's very hard, but you have to start somewhere. And that's the only way you're gonna get your property value to go back up. It has to be supply and demand. Any other question? Okay, I know it's after nine, and I think this is a very good town hall. Um, next month is Christmas month, so we're not gonna have a town hall, I want everybody to enjoy their Christmas and come back in January for some new things that are gonna happen. We're gonna have some um, announcements and some things that, that, that we're gonna try to see. That we, as a village, not just at this town hall, but as a village, to change the perception, because you are one thousand percent right, how do I get my property value to go up? How do I make my house worth more money? I go somewhere and try to get a loan on my house, or get a second mortgage, or get something in my house, and I, and they tell me it's worth less than what I paid for. You try to go out there and try to enhance, you try to fix up your house and get a mortgage on it, made a second mortgage on it, and you bought your house for a hundred thousand or sixty thousand dollars, they say it's worth fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. But you owe fifty, just like a car upside down, you do not want your house, everyone bought their house because of that investment. We already know when you buy a car, there's gonna be a deficit, so if you drive it, but not your house. And I commend you guys for coming out and fighting for that right, because you should fight for that right, that's yours, and those that don't. Own, but they live in the village, fight for the right of, of the different services, and don't just let the village be just one of the services. You got schools, you got surrounding areas, schools get more of your money than the village, village gets nineteen percent of your tax dollars, nineteen. Schools get sixty percent, high school and grants. Go for it. Alright, thank you very much, um, I, everyone have a very, very safe Thanksgiving, Christmas, and don't forget, Santa Claus will be around on the fifth of December. Enjoy, alright?